It was arguably, it was last Thursday.
Well, I didn't sign up, so I don't feel it.
Okay.
Call this meeting into order for the Board of Franklin County Commissioners Wednesday, February 16th, 2022.
Mr. Stottermeyer?
President.
Mr. Harris?
President.
Chair Dunn?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
President.
Commissioner Waymire?
President.
Okay, enjoyment pledge allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
Morning Commissioners. I give you this quote this morning from a man that I consider one of the experts in leadership. His name is John Maxwell. You may have heard of him. He says, "Excellence is always a choice. Pay attention to details, and it takes a lot of little things to add up to 100%." I just say that I really appreciate that degree of excellence that Derek and Janet and the staff have brought to this county and you as Commissioners for what you've done. So let us pray. Father, we just come, and God, we just say, "Lord, let our attention be upon the important things, God, even the smallest of details, God. We know that if we're off just a single degree sometimes, in the long run, that puts us way off target. So, God, keep the staff, keep this commission on focus to the smallest of details. That, God, we might produce that degree of excellence for the citizens of this county and for the people that deserve excellence. And all these things, we give you praise and honor. Amen."
Amen.
Do you have anything, there, correspondents?
No, sir.
Have a comment?
No, I have no comment.
Okay. Okay, we've got three items on the consent agenda. Consider claim vouchers in the amount of $1 million, $20,000, and $1,022.87. Franklin County Commission meetings, February 9th, and consider approving solicitation of bids for noxious weed chemicals. Undertain a motion to...
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Motion, and for a second?
Thank you.
Janet?
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yeah.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Dunn?
Yes. We don't have any business today, official business, so we'll go right to staff reports. Derek, you want to start us off?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a staff report today, Roy. Thank you.
Okay, we'll just go around. Sheriff, Richards?
Good morning. I just wanted to give an update. Next Monday, start of a pay period, the 21st, that's typically when we have promotions that take effect. And so effective on Monday, Hunter Dryden will be our newest sergeant at the sheriff's office. We had a, had a process that went through HR, actually had somebody on our panel, and we appreciated that help, as well as some other agencies. And so that will take effect on Monday. And then we have a new deputy starting on Monday as well. Jason Hedges will be going from a reserve deputy status to a full-time status starting Monday. And then this Monday, two days ago, we had a court security deputy and a patrol deputy that both started the 14-week academy down at KLETC. So we haven't heard any bad reports from down there yet, so things must be going okay for the first few days. So, and that's really all I have by now, other than, like everybody else, we're bracing and preparing for whatever this next wave of weather is, it's, this coming in. So if you guys have any questions for me, I'm happy to address those. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Kenny, would you have something for us?
Just one thing, real quick. As we've talked a little bit before, FEMA did do a community assistance visit for Franklin County, which is sort of an audit. I did just receive notice on Monday that everything's been approved, everything's good, so we're through that. Just wanted to let you guys know that everything ended up, coming out good. I think there was just one property owner I had to go back out and do another inspection and issue a floodplain development permit for just some storage of items in the floodplain. But I think we're, we're through that now, so.
Kenny, what does that consist of, this inspection?
Sure, the community assistant visit, there's a number of different things that go on with that. One of those, which is probably, I'd say, the more major part, is that they actually look through, like, aerial photography and see if there is development that they can see that's happened in the floodplain. And then they'll actually come and do a field visit and visit a number of sites around the county. I think we had five or six sites that they had noted that appeared to have something going on in the floodplain. I think most of those, I was able to get just them to say it was okay. This last one, just, you know, it, it was mainly trucks and trailers, and I think he had other ag equipment, especially like metal fencing and stuff that was sort of stored in the floodplain, and just sort of had to document that everything sort of tied down and anchored, so if it does flood, it's not going to float off. And then the other part of that is, they do a check of the adequacy of our floodplain regulations to make sure that we're in compliance, which we were already in the process of adopting updated regulations, so that was good. And then they also look through our floodplain permits for the past, I forget, three to five years, to make sure that we, we're doing everything correctly. So it, just sort of looking at all factors of our floodplain regulations and everything, so.
Okay, thank you, Kenny. Any questions? Okay. Dustin, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Casey?
Just be brief. COVID numbers are trending down. That's really all I have to say about that. It's a good thing. I did want to mention that sponsorship applications for TGT funds went out last week, so I'm starting to get some of those back. And then I plan to bring those to you at a meeting probably in April, or, I mean, in March, maybe early April, so. That's all I have. We started cleaning out the visitor's center yesterday, and going through all of the stuff that's in the basement and in the offices. So thanks to Brandon and Amy, we knocked a lot of that out and are well on our way to working through the move, so. Yep.
Those, applications, they're going out twice a year now?
We had talked about that originally when I was hired. That was the goal, to have two times a year, two times a year applications. Because of COVID, we have just put out the application with the caveat that you, if you're able to host your event, we will fund you this amount. I just, with this year, with the beginning of the year still being crazy with COVID, I haven't changed that for this year, but I would be happy to send out a second application later in the year if that's something you desire.
Is there a date on that, that they have to have it back by?
Yeah, they're due, I believe it's March 11th. It's a Mon, it's a Friday.
I, Dawn, I would go ahead and encourage folks to get this first round of applications in. It makes it easier for us from a budget perspective to do that.
And on that same note, Janet and I are working with the fairs, because we've always had an issue with TGT fund sponsorship versus community partner funding, and so we're trying to get that all worked out, so it's a smooth process and everybody's on the same page.
And, and have community partner applications went out? Yep. Okay, so we're, we're talking about two separate things, to be clear. We have TGT sponsorships, and then we have our community partners, which are obviously something else, something that you guys might want to think about. And, and if COVID cases continue to trend downward, then, then, you know, we'll probably recommend that we do it in person. But the last couple of years, we haven't brought community partners in to present. I think we have at least a couple that are fairly anxious to. We can wait and see what the climate is like, but you might start giving that some thought, just, because that'll be here before we know it.
Yeah, the community partner applications are due the first week of March, and I think it is good that Casey sent out the sponsorship at the same time, so that we can kind of move those people from the fairs over to the community partner process where, where we've had fair before. So it just kind of helps them transition. So, like I told you, I think, last week, my number's on there, but the fair people have worked with Casey a lot, so if you guys get questions, they can call Casey, or I will help them figure out where, where they need to put their application and, and make sure that it's done correctly. We don't want anyone to get caught up in, in, in the funding of where we pay for their funding out of. We want to make sure that they're taken care of, so.
What about board retreat? We, I know we pushed it back and kind of threw out some ideas, and we pick a day?
No, we can, I mean, I know that you've told me that the fourth doesn't work for you, and I feel like you've told me, Cole, that there's a set of days that don't work for you.
Right about there, also, yeah.
So, yeah, if you guys want to... Yeah, I mean, I can send you out. I guess what is the week? So the fourth is a Friday. Is, is it that week, Cole, that's not great, or is it the following week, or?
Actually, the fourth, third, fourth's okay. The second before isn't, so.
Okay.
Do that, do next week, after that?
So maybe we'll look at the week, that second week of March, maybe that Thursday and Friday. I don't have the...
10th, 11th?
10th and the 11th, mhm.
Want to shoot for that? I think we can, I mean, Janet, I'm assuming you can have your pieces of the retreat done, and same with you, Casey?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Why don't we tentatively shoot for that? I'll get you all an email out, and we can go from there.
What is spring break, Janet, this year?
It's the 14th through the 18th.
Okay. Any questions, Casey? Got a clinic this Friday? Pediatric clinic this Friday?
As of yesterday at 10:30, when we had our COVID call, they haven't had anybody sign up for the pediatric clinic. So they're still available if somebody wants it, but they're waiting to see if they get any signups.
So call the health department first?
Yes. Yeah, they have to make an appointment.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, David?
So we are gearing up for the snowstorm that's coming in tonight. I think they're, best we can tell, it's going to be anywhere from two to six inches. So we are going to be loading up all the plow trucks today, and we will be pre-treating some of our, well, our intersections, our hills, and those normal places that, that we pre-treat. And then we will have a crew that, that starts about when the storm comes in. So they're going to be on standby tonight, and then we will have day and night shift, work this storm until we get it under control. Temperatures, you know, ahead of the storm have been positive for us, so that'll help. And then it's supposed to warm up pretty quickly after the storm as well, so we've got a couple of days here where it might be kind of dicey, but we'll have our, our folks out trying to take care of it in the meantime. I will be meeting with CFS engineers, our, our bridge folks, this afternoon. We're going to talk about the Osborn Terrace Bridge Replacement Project, talk through some, some details on that. And then we're also going to be reviewing the, oh, the bridge inspection report that they prepared this last year, and looking at, kind of setting a set of priorities for those based on the, the report. And eventually, that will be coming back before you guys to talk about potential projects and that sort of thing. We also received the MSW Assessment Summary. That's the municipal solid waste, where we went out with SES and we, our landfill contractor, or consultant, rather, and potholed a number of areas around the landfill, looking for the extents of the original municipal solid waste limits. Were they, years ago, when they, when we had a permitted landfill that accepted that, we need to see where those, those limits are in order to help us design for stormwater detention and those sorts of things. And so the results of that indicated that, well, they, first of all, we found the depth of the, the waste, and then in a few locations, we're able to determine where the bedrock was. All of those things will be considered in the design phase, whenever they start talking about how stormwater runoff will be handled on the, on, at the CND landfill, whether it be terraces or perimeter, perimeter, perimeter channels, hard word to say evidently. All of those will be utilized in the design. Some of the areas, there's a couple of the areas where the, the waste was deeper than it really needed to be, so that's going to open up the opportunity for possibly using some of that topsoil that exists there for cover material in other areas, and we may be able to go a little deeper with the CND in those areas. So that's, that's all positive. And today, they are out drilling. We, you all approved a contract last week for three additional monitoring wells. They're actually out today installing those, or doing the drilling work for that. So overall, I'm very pleased with the, the progress of this project, the, the correspondence that I've been a part of, back and forth with KDHE, all the submittals that they have sent to KDHE, all of that is, the responses from KDHE have all been very positive. So I think the project's moving along, just like we hoped it would, and so far, having hit any substantial issues, everything has been pretty positive. So, yeah, that's what I've got today.
Going to make a comment about the, the storm. It's not, we're going to get so much snow, but that wind is still going to be blowing, and then you get the drifting.
Yes, and that's, you know, tonight and, and tomorrow will be plowing snow, but tomorrow afternoon and, and into Friday, we'll be back out taking care of those drifts.
Any other questions, David?
No, question, comment, want to thank the people that patched the holes out on, on Rock Creek Road. They did a really good job. I mean, most of the time, after they patch, you can drive over them field where they patch. You can't feel the, I had to go back and look, because I, because I used to hitting a few of them, and they've gone to their work. And when I went back home, I had to look, because they did such a good job, but smoothed them and, and leveled height, you didn't feel anything, so they did a good job.
We had two crews out last week for a day patching, taking advantage of the, of the nice, warm weather. That, that always helps.
They did a good job.
David, who, who are the specific employees that are on those crews that do that work?
It, it varies. I, I would have to go back, let's see, you know, I would have to go back and, and look, but it, it, it does vary, depending on what other work we're doing at that, that day. I can assure you that everybody gets their turn.
Yeah, yeah, fair enough.
Thanks, David. Janet?
I just wanted to let you guys know that I continue to watch legislation, and I participate in conference calls with KAC, as does Ian on your behalf, where county officials are watching a number of bills. I did talk to Karen Tyson, our senator, last week, and she said that the food sales tax bill did pass out of committee, and that does include a provision for if counties want to opt out of our portion of the food sales tax, we can, although not mandatory. She didn't, she acted like she wasn't sure that very many counties would opt out, but that is a sizable amount of tax to remove from food, which is 6.5%, the state's portion. So, but that is waiting to be heard on the floor, I believe, still. So there's not very many bills that have passed, just because they're working on the, the maps, and the maps did get their official override last week, so they're going to be reviewed in the courts now. There's a number of lawsuits that have been filed against the redistricting map. So lots going on up at the legislature, and there's lots of bills that KAC and the Commissioner's lobbyist is watching, along with a, a lot of bills that other local government organizations are watching, a lot of election bills floating around for different changes that they're going to try to require election officials to do, and create a lot more steps for us, and potentially change the, the way we canvass the election and things like that. So lots going on up there right now.
There are some questions. So since we levy the hospital sales tax, but it's for a specific purpose, would it be, would the question be to us whether to opt it out of food sales tax, or them, I wonder?
I, I don't know about the hospital sales tax, if that's something that we could opt out of. I, I don't know. I would, I could definitely make a call to Department of Revenue and see what their thoughts on that are. I don't know that they would weigh in on that at this point, because it's just made it out of committee, hasn't made it to the floor. Senator Tyson said that she did extend the start date on that, that bill to 2024, because she is really concerned about the Apex Bill, which I'm sure you guys have heard about, which is the big bill to attract large corporations to Kansas. And so she said that was quite a hefty price tag she felt like on that, and she didn't want to jeopardize the level of funds that the state had, when eliminating food sales tax in conjunction with the money that we were going to potentially be giving this corporation to come here.
The food tax still is a big deal, because it's a...
It, it is a big deal. You know, we, I heard from all three of our legislators last week, and, and they're not all in agreement that food sales tax is the way to go. A couple of them said they would like to see sales tax go down kind of a little bit across the board, so maybe not have a 6.5% sales tax for everything, maybe go down to like a 5% sales tax on everything, where we don't just eliminate it on one particular thing, but we'll, we lower sales tax across the board, so it's a more even spread for, you know, for, for everyone, and not just on food. So I don't think the discussion's over, but it has made it out of the Senate Tax Committee, and, and I look forward to be heard by the Senate.
Yeah, I think Monday was County Government Day, wasn't it?
County Government, KAC's having their Government Day today. Yeah. So I know there's, I, I know my organization has a table up there. I, I think the Commissioners do too. There's a number of counties that are individually representing themselves, so they, I think they were hoping to have 100, 100 and some tables.
If it was any day but today, I would have gone, but...
Yeah, yeah. Definitely. So there'll be a lot of people up there representing county government, and Casey just wanted to do that to let, let the legislators know that there are a lot of people that they affect when they make laws pertaining to local government, so.
Okay, any other questions, Janet? Okay, we're going to have an executive assessment, but I think we'll go through the Commissioners for any Commissioners report first. Don?
Paul, got anything?
Paul, come up for a second?
Just a couple of quick things. Good morning, Commissioners. Continue to work on the Franklin County Career Day for all our seniors and juniors. We have all the schools participating, and we're getting a great response on that. We've got 50 tables reserved from different businesses that are going to be participating that day, and we'll have about 600 kids. So that's going very, very well, and if there's anybody out there still listening, or still interested in participating, they, they can certainly reach out to me, and we've got a little bit of room left, but that's going to be a big success. And the other thing, I'm, I'm going to start sending out today to FCDC members, but want to get it out to the communities, been working with Ministerial Alliance, and ECAN, and United Way, and Hope House, on trying to find ways we can help the homeless, especially in the cold, get some temporary housing, and, and some of the hotels in town will do a discount for, for us. But Advent Health has contributed $2,000 to, to help for temporary housing for homeless in these bad weather times, and so we're kind of challenging all the, all the FCDC members, but also want to extend that to other businesses in the community to participate, and they can reach out to Hope House and make a contribution to help, help those less fortunate in our community that are needing shelter, temporary shelter. So very proud of Advent Health and the way they stepped up to kind of kick this off. So just wanted to share those two things.
Career Day, 22nd?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, March 22nd.
March 22nd.
Yep, yep. At Ottawa High School, and the juniors will be in the morning, and the seniors will be in the afternoon. FCDC is providing t-shirts for all the kids. We're providing a lunch for all the volunteers, and then we're going to spend about $1,000 we've committed for prizes for the kids drawing. So FCDC's very engaged in this, because we feel it's important for workforce. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Good, Don?
Yeah, I did attend the Wellsville meeting yesterday. Get back here. They did, they did their year-end budget transfers. They had their accountant there. They did have a group there that is developing a new housing project in Wellsville, and they have purchased land. I couldn't see the map where I was sitting, but over by the high school somewhere, and they're going to start by building two houses at a time on the deal, build to sell, build to and sell. So I don't know how many total, but sounds like it's a fairly good site and project, so that's a good thing. I give, I just kind of give them the amateur report that we got the other day on our, she, Christie provided me with the numbers, and I was just able to give them the number. And they're still working on their community person. They're trying to develop that spot. There'll kind of be a liaison between the Chamber and the, and the city and, and the Health Department Coalition up there. And so that's, that's amazing. That's all I, all I got.
I don't have anything more. I am?
Just have a couple of quick things. Roy and I went to the Conservation District Dinner on Thursday, and they did have a little, actually a nice little presentation about the history of the Conservation District and the, and the partnership with the Franklin County. The district started in 1941, and back then, the county contributed $2,500 toward the Conservation District, but we've been with them, partners, since the beginning, and they did show their appreciation, or extended their appreciation for that. The only other thing is, the City of Ottawa, Tom Wigan, on February, on Valentine's Day, 26 years ago, began his public service as a Franklin County Commissioner. And over the years, he's served, I think, at the Chamber, at the Prairie Paws, at the City of Ottawa as a City Commissioner, and on Monday, Valentine's Day this year, he actually extended his resignation off of the board, so he is no longer going to be a City Commissioner when that. I don't think they've actually officially accepted it. I think they'll do that today, but he, he is doing, doing a lot of traveling, and it's going to be out of town a lot, and just didn't feel like he could serve the community, so he is no longer going to be a Commissioner, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Cole, do you have anything?
Yeah, like I had said, I went to Conservation District, and just for comparison, like I had said, started out with $2,500. Last year, it was $4,500, so that's kind of how things go.
Not 4,500.
4,500.
There you go.
Yeah. Anyway, they, of course, deal with water and conservation and all those programs for the farmers in this area, so it's a good organization. I did go to the ECAN Board Meeting last night. They're doing their kind of end of, end of the year type summary, summary, starting with the New Year. And they're doing a lot of visioning and strategic planning and staff development program for, for the staff, and that's going real well. And they're, like everybody else, are short of staff members and trying to not only retain their current members, but also, you know, recruit new people. They're down quite a few people in Head Start specifically, and...
They're down quite a few people in Head Start specifically, and one thing they did do, they needed some upgrades on their vehicles, and with the money they weren't paying for their, the staff, because there wasn't any staff there, they're going to purchase four vehicles with that, those funds, so they're doing, doing real well and trying to promote their programs, and, and like Paul said, ECAN is working diligently to try to find affordable housing and emergency housing and stuff like that for people that are less fortunate, so it's a good organization. I don't have anything on that. Does anything, anybody have anything else? At this time, we're going to enter into executive session with the, with the board, Derek and Paul Bean, for approximately one hour. Need a motion for that.
Prove that we enter into executive session for one hour.
Thank you.
All those in favor, just say yes. Okay, I'll be in session at about 9:06. How's that, take five minutes?
Okay.
Could I get a copy of one of them?
Okay, need a... Janet, we're coming out of executive session at 9:45. No actions taken. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Or adjourn.